Mr. Andy Brooks, thank you for joining me on the podcast today. It's a pleasure to have you in.
I'm honored to be here Jake, thanks very much.
Yeah, it's been awhile since we caught up. I remember, I think it was last year, I was walking around my old neighborhood in Roland Park area and you were walking around, but now that I'm living on campus and it's just been awhile since we've caught up, so what's been, what's new with you? What's been keeping you busy?
Well, great question. Well, that's a good intro. Well, I guess the thing that's been keeping me most busy is my new job, which is effective July 1st, I'm the new president of the Board of Trustees of Gilman School and very honored and humbled to be in that role. So, been spending some time thinking about that and, you know, of course, the summer was a good time to recharge the batteries, I hope, for you and certainly for our family. And so, we had lots of fun and lots of things going on, but all good and nice to be here with you.
Excellent. So, tell me a little bit about what that has been like stepping into that new role as the president of the Board at Gilman School?
Well, you know, it's something you spend, Gilman's very intentional, as you would expect, around succession planning, which is an important thing to do. And so, the year before, I was the president-elect, so I sort of had a year to shadow Mark Fettin, who was the past Board Chair, and get my feet on the ground a little bit. And over the years, I've done a number of things volunteering for Gilman, but I certainly don't know everything and didn't know some of the subtleties and nuances around some of the different committee work that happens or things going on at the school. So, I spent the last year trying to get up to speed on that. And then, of course, you know, July 1st, you're really drinking from a fire hose, you know, lots to do before the school year starts and to get organized. But it's been a lot of fun so far and people have been very supportive and I'm hopeful they'll feel good about this in about three and a half years, my term ends in four, but so far, so good. I'm enjoying myself and I hope, you know, my party line is, "I hope to be my best self."
Yeah, I like that.
And I, as I, as I sort of think about things, you know, if you can combine some of the Gilman Five, in particular Excellence, with Humility, you know, that would be a really nice combination, you know, to strive for excellence and be humble in doing it. And I'm hoping I can help the school do some of that.
Awesome.
Do some more of that, because we do plenty.
Yeah. So, what, so what are some of the aspects, I guess, of your vision as the president of the Board? Like where do you see the school going in the next couple of years as, you know, the school follows your lead with the Board and Henry?
Yeah, good question. So, I, you know, I think it's important to level set things a little bit and I try not to get too carried away with my strategic thinking, if you will. I'm a, I hope I'm a good thinker, but I think there are so many smart people involved with Gilman and so, you know, real great insight about the future. I think we can get that from a lot of others, not just from me. And so, what, how I translate that, if you will, is, you know, just every day, trying to figure out how we can be a little better. And so, it's incremental in nature. And that's not to say that Gilman is a supertanker and you gotta turn it slowly, but it, you know, it's a big, complex organization and does require patience and thoughtfulness about change. But I think that so many things the school does today, every day, are done well and they're well intentioned. And, you know, I had a, I had the great opportunity, you were probably there, I hope, but I had a great opportunity to introduce myself to the faculty and staff in late August.
Yep, I was there.
At a full staff and faculty meeting and I was just in awe of the, of the energy and the commitment and the talent and the knowledge and the capabilities that were presented in that Gilman Auditorium, the Alumni Auditorium. So, I think the school is in very good shape and doing a lot of things really well. On the margin, can we be better? Sure we can. You know, can we help the boys be their best selves? Absolutely. So, I think my goal is to try and be a good listener, to think about things, to be supportive, to make sure school leadership and faculty and staff have the resources they need to do the job, to be supportive of the kids, to be supportive of families, to be supportive of the broader Gilman community and the community at large. And again, if we can, if we can identify some things that need some tweaking and some things that could be improved on, I think that's what we're gonna go after.
Absolutely. Yeah, so to step into a role like this, you were infused with a love for the school from a, from a young time and you're obviously a graduate of Gilman School. I'd love to hear about your experience at Gilman as a student and really what made it so special to you that, you know, it's been such a key place in your life.
Yeah, great. Well, I'll wander around with that a little bit and see how I can answer your question. You know, I, I'm one of those people that would do anything that Gilman asked of me. My experience was that important to me, was that impactful. You know, I came here in the sixth grade, Sixth Form Lower School, back in the day when there wasn't a middle school and my older brother, my oldest brother Steve, was a class of 67 and I'm the class of 74. We call ourselves the Famous Class of 74. I'll tell you, I'll tell you that story later. But, you know, my Gilman experience was just really important to me and had a profound impact, I think, on shaping my character. And, you know, I had strong family upbringing and things and, but my, you know, my father died when I was about five. He went to Gilman, did not graduate, but went here, would be the class of 1935. And, you know, Mr. Finney was a pretty new headmaster at the time and I, you know, I sat right behind him in Chapel every day. So, you know, he and Mr. Gamper would sit in the first two seats up on the upper right as you're looking at the stage and then behind those two seats were three, because it went two, three, four, five and it would expand out like an accordion. And I was in the middle seat of the second row and so, every morning, he would turn around and say, "Good morning, Andy." And he'd squeeze my leg until I could die, you know, because he's got these huge hands, big, strong guy, but, but just a terrific influence on all of us at the school. And, you know, my, my class, you know, just wonderful guys and I'm very close with, with all them, everybody I see and they've been lifelong friendships. And, you know, the faculty was great here when I was a kid and the experiences of playing, you know, I was a modest athlete. I played football and lacrosse. I was not a very good basketball player, played a little bit. But, you know, I, I didn't play much at Gilman Lacrosse, but I was the co-captain of my Union College team and I played, I played every game, starting third game freshman year. Guy got hurt and I was, I was a center mid and faceoff guy and, you know, I stepped right in and, you know, the Gilman training and experience and coaching and stuff was formative for me. But, you know, more importantly, just a sense of grounding that the school provided for me and I think my classmates has, has helped me throughout my life, really. And so, so I've seen firsthand what a Gilman experience can be for kids and for me and I hope that for others. You know, it won't be, won't be perfect. It wasn't perfect for me, but boy, it was pretty, it was pretty darn good.
Yeah. I teach, I teach this Leadership and Character class here at Gilman. It's an English class, but it's a lot about like what types of things can we read and study, either historically or literary, that can help us think about our character? And I've been thinking a lot about Gilman as a place and kind of infusing the students here with character values. And it seems like Chapel and, you know, now we have Assembly and we have Advisory and we have different ways of interacting with the boys to boost their character, but I'm curious about how Chapel and other aspects of the school, I guess, provided you with, with character values that you took with you?
Yeah. So, you know, the Chapel/Assembly experience, I think, is incredibly important. Gosh, we had, you know, whether it was senior speeches or people coming from the outside, educators, physicians, business leaders, change agents, I mean, it's just amazing array of experience presented to you on the stage. And, you know, Gilman, even then, Gilman had a realization, I think, that, that it was important to be outward facing and to not only think, not to be insular. And so, Gilman had a commitment early on, at least from where I sat and observed, of a commitment to the community and to, and to the world, if you will, and to make sure that Gilman boys were not in some silo, but were made aware of others, other, other ways of looking at things, other things to do, that people can live in different ways, that people have different circumstances, that, you know, not everybody can grow up on Longwood Road, which, where I did. Not everybody has, you know, five siblings, not everybody can afford to go do something in the summertime, not everybody, you know, can buy lunch, you know, you bring it from home, whatever. And we had that full spectrum and then, and then it was also directed outwards. And gee, back, you know, we, we had kids in school very involved in politics, political campaigns. You've probably heard about a guy named Mr. Schlotter. His son teaches in lower school, but Nick Schlotter was a whirlwind in terms of political activity and, you know, we volunteered on campaigns and knocked on doors and, you know, did polling and all kinds of cool stuff. And so, you know, you sort of got this, you got exposed to the full spectrum of life. And a lot of it was grounded in, in this, you know, back then, what might now be the Gilman Five kind of thing, but senses of integrity and purpose and being respectful of others and being humble in your approach, but, but striving for excellence and demanding that of others. And, you know, I, I've always believed, because of my Gilman experience, you want to surround yourself with the smartest people you can. You want to be on a team where people are really good. You want, it takes up your game. You know, you play tennis and if you play tennis and you play doubles and the people on the other side of the net are really good, guess what? You play better. And so, Gilman was an environment where there were just so many people that were so talented and I was like, wow, you know, so you gotta work, you know, you gotta work harder, you gotta figure out, okay, where's my spot? How do I find a place to succeed? How do I find something that I'm good at? And gee, even then, we had a, you know, just a plethora of opportunities to present to the kids and, you know, whether it's debating or, you know, singing in the glee club, you know, gosh, we're here in, in the back of the auditorium, you know, my English class with Mr. Merrill in eighth grade was, was right here next to us and he was a glee club director and gosh, we had fun. And I tried to get my kids to sing and not a one of them does, not that I was a great singer, but that's great exercise.
Yeah.
You're an athlete, you, you can't believe the aerobic nature of singing.
Right.
You know, and you, after you sing for three hours or something, you're exhausted, you know? But singing's a lot of fun. And so, there are all kinds of things that Gilman exposed me and others to, which hopefully a lot of those good things have stayed with us for life.
Absolutely. So, you mentioned your senior speeches were a big part of, was that when they happened during Chapel?
They'd happen during Chapel and then, you know, like I remember, there's an Emerson Lake and Palmer song, I think, called Lucky Man. And one guy, Chris Taylor, I think was his name, and he was the president of the class, maybe in 72 or something, somebody, I'll have to check this, but I'm pretty sure. Anyway, he got up and he just said, "I just want to have you listen to something." And he sat down and there was the 20-minute version of Lucky Man, which is probably the whole side of an album. And it was, it was terrific and it was powerful, you know? So, it was like, ooh, that's different, you know? So, you just never knew what was gonna happen in Chapel and kind of the cool things that you would learn. So, anyway.
And did you deliver a senior speech? I guess you had to when you were a student here.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm gonna, I, my Fifth Form Term Paper was on the Hungarian Revolution. And so, invariably, you might, your speech might have been about that.
Gotcha.
And, and it was, you know, it was an opportunity to work on your public speaking skills and stuff like that. Fortunately for me, I'm, I'm one of those people, good or bad, I can pretty much talk to anybody about anything for about five minutes. I might lose traction after that, but I'm usually okay in an extemporaneous fashion. But senior speech was a, that was certainly a rite of passage and, and so was the Fifth Form Term Paper. I don't know, do we still do that? Is there still a big junior paper that has to be done sort of perfectly with bibliography and footnotes and, you know, grammar and everything really being dialed in?
I think, I mean, I don't know for sure, but I think in Mr. Hudson's class at least, I know that they're writing pretty, pretty serious papers at the end of each semester or quarter or so. I think, you know, maybe not the same exact type of paper that you, that you produced, but probably like it.
Yeah, it's funny here, I'm a little embarrassed about this, this happens to get to be older, but I, my, my, I think my Sixth Form Lower paper and speech was on the Louisiana Purchase. And, but I think when I was a senior, it was the Hungarian Revolution and I'm gonna have to go back and check in the, in the annals or something. Maybe I can get to the archivist at the school and they can remind me, refresh my memory.
Yeah. Well, I love that you're talking about how influential the environment of Gilman is and how many impressive people there are here, whether they're students or teachers or other faculty members that you can look up to and try to emulate. I really like the quote, "Iron sharpens iron," meaning if you're just, you know, iron doesn't sharpen wood or iron, iron doesn't sharpen metal, it's iron sharpens iron. So, if you're with people who are impressive and, you know, good character people, you're gonna be just like that yourself.
Yeah, it rubs off and it's, it's always something that I've been, I've been drawn to because of my Gilman experience. You know, it's just, you know, it's extraordinary to, to sort of watch brilliance in motion, you know, really talented people do something. It doesn't matter what could be on, could be on the tennis court, but it could also be a surgeon, you know, where you're watching something on television, or it could be watch, watching someone manage a crowd or organize a team or get people together behind something. And, you know, I think people with talents and, and all of us have talents, right? So, observing people's talents, it really, there's a lot, you learn a lot from it and you become a better person.
Now, as a young high school student, how did you kind of find your, your avenue and figure out what it was that you were really passionate about or into in high school and really what led you to, to go to Union College after graduating?
Well, let's see. So, so I think, you know, I'm, I'm sort of one of those people that's a joiner and I've, I think I was reasonably ambitious and interested in, in being part of things and, you know, it was very, you know, we had a very active class and a lot of things going on, lots of opportunities and we just all sort of jumped in together, you know? So, there was safety in numbers on that. And I, still to this day, I just have a lot of varied interests. I don't think I'm a, you know, I'm generally a, you know, somebody, I occasionally do the deep dive on things, but, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty spread out and I like that. So, I like to, people say, "What are you doing in retirement?" Well, I can, you know, I can tinker or I can fiddle around or I can, you know, just sort of do different things and, and not get too, you know, worried about whether, you know, I'm occupied, you know? I don't have any problem occupying my time myself. So, my mind kind of wanders around into a lot of different things. But, you know, I would say that, you know, and I've said this to my kids and I got, you know, I got five kids, five boys, I wish I had worked harder. You know, I wish I had worked harder at Gilman, I wish I had worked harder in college. I did a lot of things and, and that was good, but I could have worked harder, you know? And I always remember there was, the people that figured out how to both have lots of fun but get all their work done, they were the ones that really you want to emulate, because you can do both. And I wish I had prioritized a little bit more when I was younger in that. Because, you know, the world is a, world's a very competitive place and you've got to figure out a way to find your spot, but you gotta work hard. And the sooner you can realize that and sort of get in shape for that, maybe, maybe the better off you are.
I agree with that.
And even, you know, when I was in college, you know, I, and not unlike Gilman, you know, I sang in the glee club for a couple of years, I was the president of my fraternity, I played lacrosse, you know, doing all this kind of stuff. And I, and a lot of those things that I'd learned from that are life skills today. So, they have value, but if you can, if you can do a good job of putting the books in perspective too and make sure that that gets highlighted, emphasized, you know, that, that would be a win. As for Union, you know, Mr. Downs, who was my college counselor back in the day, and he liked Union College and at that time, Gilman was sending some kids to Union pretty much every year and my oldest brother Steve went there. And so, it was natural that I, I applied and I applied to some other places and, you know, I'm one of those guys that did not get into Princeton and no surprise, I'm sure, to Princeton, but I, I did not have the academic profile and, you know, but, but I, you know, no apologies for that. I mean, I wish I had worked harder, but I'm not sure that would have made a difference. And it turned out, Union was a very good place for me and I had a great experience there and majored in history and, you know, enjoyed my time and got some lifelong friends and was able to do a number of things in a small college that, that offers, you know, opportunities for kids to find, find their way and, and things. And so, I'm a very proud Union College graduate.
And you're a history major?
I'm a history major, yeah.
So, how'd you decide on history?
Well, let's see. I always liked history a lot, you know, I had wonderful history teachers at Gilman, including, you know, Mercer Neal and Bill Campbell. Bill Campbell taught us US history. Mr. Pine taught, taught me modern European, you know? I still hold that out, I got a four on my Modern European AP, maybe it was the US History AP, I think it was Modern European, that was a big deal for me. But Bill Campbell was just a wonderful, wonderful teacher and, boy, we learned a lot and, you know, had, had fun with that. And just always interested in history, you know? And so, I took a lot of history courses at college and enjoyed that. And I think, you know, you know, there's a lot to be learned by being a student of history. A lot of, a lot of things you can apply to your life, a lot of things you can apply to a healthy analysis of, of things you're seeing. Oh, boy, that's, that's familiar.
Right.
I wonder if that's like, and it's not just politics, of course, but there's the history, there's, there's economic history, you know, that you can observe and, and learn from. There's a lot of religious history, really interesting, you know? So, history is, it's an important subject. I'm honored today to be, one of the other things I've, I've done in my life, I serve on the Board of the Maryland Center for History and Culture, which is the old Maryland Historical Society, classmate of mine, Clinton Daly is the Board Chair today and, and honored to serve with him and be a part of that. But, you know, MCHC has seven million documents in their, in their collection, including the original Star Spangled Banner.
Oh, wow.
You know, kind of neat when you think about things. So, you want to understand where we came from and in Baltimore, you, would you want to know that in, in the, in the middle of the 19th century, Baltimore was the third largest city in the country? Why? Well, the port would be a big rationale for that, right? So, it's really interesting when you think about things, you know, whether it's the first monument to George Washington in Mount Vernon, go look at that beauty sometime. You know, I finally walked up to the top of that, it was always closed and it's been renovated. Good Gilman guy, Henry Hopkins, involved in the renovation of that and what a beautiful sight you get from the top of that George Washington monument. But the first one built in the President's Honor, right here in Baltimore. So, there's a lot to, to learn and a lot to take away from history if, if you have the time and the interest.
I, I'm really into history as well. I think if I, if I didn't teach English, I'd like to pick up an American history course because I didn't study history in college, but a lot of the classes that I took were American Studies-esque classes, where we looked at history alongside of English.
Yeah.
But I went to a really cool, I went to Franklin Roosevelt's museum and house this, this summer in Hyde Park, New York.
In Hyde Park, New York, yeah.
And that was, that was really cool to see. There was a lot there, he's buried there as well, he was born and raised there and I just thought that museum was, was pretty well-run, but, but a cool place to go. And then, another place that I've been in the past is Monticello, which blew me away. I thought that was incredible and I'd gladly go there again. What has been like the most fascinating historical site that, that you've been to?
Wow.
Monuments DC?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know. You know, I mean, I don't know, I'm not sure where I can begin on that, not that I've been to so, so many, but, you know, the Vietnam War Memorial is a really powerful place in my mind. I was younger and not draft age eligible, but boy, that was a, that was a tough time for the country and, you know, I was a kid growing up through that. You know, our, our national parks are just unbelievable. You mentioned Franklin Roosevelt, Teddy Roosevelt, I don't know how we thank him enough. I wish every president would add to the national park system. It's, it's extraordinary going to some of these places.
Yeah.
And, and it could be, it can be everything from Fort McHenry to Yellowstone to Glacier, you know, to, to Bryce and Zion and Utah and just, and it just goes on and on and on, you know? I think, you know, Jefferson Memorial and really all the, all the great monuments in DC, of course, are spectacular. I've never been to the, to the Statue of Liberty, I would like to go there sometime. You know, I, you know, it's just, America's an amazing place, you know? And when you think about the diversity that, that the country offers in terms of climate and topography and people and culture and stuff, gosh, you know, Amtrak ran an ad campaign a number of years ago, it said, "See America First," you know? And there, there's a lot of cool places that go in this country and of course, there are a lot of cool places go in the world. But historical spots, you know, Antietam, you know, bloodiest battle in the Civil War?
Yeah.
That's a pretty powerful place. Gettysburg, I don't know where to start, you know? I wish I, I wish I could take, you know, every year, go for a couple of days up there with one of these really talented docents, you know, park reserve, park, park ranger docent people and really understand what happened there, you know, as the country was fighting itself. So, there's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of cool things to, to see. And, you know, I, I'm working on my, my bucket list on some of those things, whatever they are.
Yeah.
Great question.
So, you talked about how in retirement, that you have a lot of different hobbies and things that you do and you have no problem keeping yourself busy. Obviously, you're busy as the president of the Board, but in other areas and one, one of my favorite stories to tell is my grandfather, we called him Wiz, and when he was retired, he would, first of all, he never really believed in the internet. It took him a while to kind of get on board with the internet. He always thought like, "Jake, I can look the, whatever you want up in the encyclopedia is way faster than you could do it on that thing." And he finally caved and realized, you know, the internet will pick it up in .005 seconds, you know?
Right, right.
So, he, in his retirement, he would sit out in the garage and he would write these wisdom memos to the entire family about one subject and he was into history, he was into all these different types of, of things and he put them together into a book.
Wow.
Which was really cool and, you know, when you were talking about not being able to, or being able to keep yourself busy at all times, I thought about Wiz, because he was just, he was in paradise out there on his computer with the internet. But I'm curious about what types of things in retirement and, and as you're studying on your own, that you like to read and, and look into?
Well, my, my wife Santa would say that, you know, I repeat myself too often in my stories, but I do like to share stories. I don't think I'm talented enough to write wisdoms, but, but, you know, I think sometimes probably all of us imagine whether, how we could impart knowledge, right? And do it with, with respect and civility and, and some humility and things like that. So, I've often wondered about, about that and I think what I, you know, I'm one of those people who, I really get a kick out of just engaging with others. So, you will not see me walk down the street with my head down, you know, "I'm looking for you." "Is that Jake over there?" "No, it looks like that's not him." You know, or, you know, I will talk to just about anybody, you know, everybody, just to say hi and see what happens. It's extraordinary when you engage people, how you can make, brighten up their day. Just, just give them a little lift by being nice, you know? I used to work, you know, I worked at T. R. Price for almost 40 years and one of our guys used to say, "Why not be nice?" You know, think about that simple charge, why not be nice? So, there are all these little tidbits that you pick along, wisdoms to think about your grandfather along the way that maybe you pass along, you know, and maybe, maybe they get traction, you know? One of the things I've always enjoyed is tried to think about how to impact others, younger people generally, but, but anybody in terms of maybe a different way of doing things, a different way of solving a problem, a different way of interacting with somebody, a different way of, of providing support, you know? Because there's not a one way to do these things, but you, it's, it's really... you, it, it's, it's really, it's really pretty fulfilling when you can try and feel as if you've made a difference in somebody's life. And I'm always envious of you all as teachers in a, in a school setting, because you get to do that every day, right? And, and that sometimes I, I think the challenge for, for teachers and, you know, just anybody that, that's trying to help people on ways, you know, you never know, you never know what impact you're having. And then all of a sudden, somebody will come up to you and say, you know, you changed my life. Because of you, I decided to do this and that led me to this. And I'm not quite sure how to thank you. And I'm sure teachers don't get that enough, but boy, you get it. And that is, if that doesn't drive you to wanna continue to thrive in this profession of serving others, of teaching things like that, I'm not sure what, what would. I know in my own life and ways, when I hear that somebody said, you know, you told me to do this, that was damn good advice. That, you know, I'm on cloud nine, you know, for a while. This doesn't go right away. I mean, that keeps me going for a while.
Yeah. And I think it's fascinating that you don't really realize it a lot of the time and you're talking about why not be nice? And one of my favorite things that, that Henry says all the time in assemblies and to the students is, is say hey to each other, because it's the most simple thing ever, is when you're walking down the hallway, just say hi to someone, right? It's, it's easy. But you just don't realize, you know, how that might come off to someone and how that might impact the rest of their day. We were talking to Michael Stanberg, the librarian, who you've mentioned you watched a little bit of that, that episode.
Yep.
He talks about how he ran the Newark Marathon a couple of times and, you know, on the, the hardest part of the marathon, he was wearing his tag with his name on, on the front and some random dude is just walking around and says, you got this, Michael. And he needed it the most in that split second. And that like allowed him to finish the last couple of miles.
Yeah.
And I always think about that as you never know, if you just say hi to someone, it could just brighten up their entire rest of their week, you know?
You know, I was the, I, my, my class leadership experience sort of concluded after freshman year. I was president of the freshman class, but that was it. And one of my classmates took over from there and did a great job. But I, I was a, am a proud recipient of the Louis Omar Woodward Award, which would go to a freshman. And on the back of the award, it says, for leadership, dedication and enthusiasm to the Gilman School. And, and I always treasured that and, and, you know, some aspect of leadership and dedication, enthusiasm are easy, come easier for me. Hopefully, leadership does too, but you know, that depends on the day and depends on who you're talking to, but those are, those are things to aspire to, I think, and be dedicated to something or someone. Principles, whatever it might be, and, and have enthusiasm for it. And I think I'm generally one of those people that's long on enthusiasm.
Yeah. So the, the name of this podcast, we were talking about a little bit before we started, Path to Follow Podcast, in honor of Mr. Finney and the documentary made about him. And I'm curious if there are any stories about Mr. Finney other than, you know, sitting behind him in chapel and him squeezing your, squeezing your leg and saying hi to you. If there's anything that you think about when you think about him as kind of an influential leader at the school?
Well, I mean, you know, you could just, geez, I don't know much time we have, right? We could go on and on about Ready, but, but I, I, maybe start this way, you know, Ready was not perfect. And he knew it. And, and he would, he, he defined humility. I mean, he really did. He was the most humble person ever. And he was bigger than life and he was big physically, you know. So he would put people up against the wall. You know, you step out of line. He would wrestle with guys just for fun, you know, kinda thing. And he loved to mix it up like that. And it was intimidating, but it was also welcoming, you know. But Ready, you know, he, he, it's not like he never made mistakes, but he was so genuine in what he was trying to do. And he really just, he had a way of relating to everybody. Everybody. Didn't matter what your walk of life was, you know, Ready could connect with you and you know, I mean, I, there are all kinds of small things, you know, but I remember when I graduated, I, I was not, you know, I didn't get any of the big awards at graduation, but I got a really nice letter from Ready in my box, which I still have. And just talking about me and, and, and being supportive of me and, and thanking me and wishing me well, kinda stuff. And you know, that's not one of the things he had to do. And I'm guessing he probably did that with, I don't know, a lot of kids, you know. And it meant a lot to me. He, you know, later in life, I got to see him in, in some different roles and we did some volunteer stuff together and, and, you know, I, he, he just, he just always wanted to know how he could help, you know. And, and when he was, when he was the headmaster and head of school and when I was here, you know, my class, we, we did a few things that probably broke a few rules and pushed the envelope a little bit and Ready had to deal with us. And he did it, he was tough, but it was, you know, we all got through it together. My class was a little disruptive occasionally as probably all classes. And we, we got to see all sides of, of Ready. And, you know, he, he had some great mentors and, 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 and he's been a great mentor to a lot of people too. And he, he just was, he was an extraordinary guy, you know, you. Everybody talks about him picking up trash. I mean, he was just a whirlwind. The guy would just do everything all the time. But what, everything he did, it was just really, it was so authentic, you know, and, and he probably defines authenticity in, in his actions. And he would never have asked you to do anything he wouldn't do. And he found a way to treat everybody with such decency, you know, and compassion. And, and that was, that was a big, you know, that was, that was a big influence on all of us, I think, to watch him navigate that and to be, I mean, you know, he was inclusive before anybody knew what that meant.
Right.
You know, he was committed to diversity and integrity and, and community before anybody really understood what that was.
Yeah.
And, you know, you'd meet these people that, that he had impacted in their lives and, you know, extraordinary.
Yeah. Your class, Class of Seventy Four, you called it the.
The Famous Class of Seventy Four. So I'm gonna give this up a little bit, cause maybe some of these kids won't have seen this podcast. I don't know, I mean, you, you probably get thousands of viewers. I don't think I'll get too many, but I always have fun with kids and they say, you know, where, you know, where are you in school? I'm Gilman. What grade are you? I'm seventh grade. Have you studied the Famous Class of Seventy Four yet? And they look at you and they're like, well, nah, not yet. I say, well, it's probably this spring you'll get to us. And then you just, you just walk away, you know, and they're wondering, oh man, what's that about? You know, who knows? Nothing, of course. But we, we, Class of Seventy Four was a terrific group of guys and we had a lot of fun together and you know, I've got lifelong friendships from that and it means the world to me.
Yeah.
Really does. You know, there's just a, there's a camaraderie and a, and a bonding that happens. And, and you know, boys might be different than girls in this. I really don't know, but I do think when you, when you have bonded with, with somebody and, you know, at Gilman, you might not see them for 25 years, but you can see them, you're right back.
Yeah.
You know, you haven't missed a beat. And you pick up exactly where you wanna be and, and that's pretty darn cool. And we've got that with our class, I think. Not, not, not all the time, not everybody, but you know, there's a lot of that spirit. So it's a, it's, you know, it, it, it provides, it provides great comfort when you're older, I think, as you get older. And, you know, you asked about retirement stuff. You know, there's, there's just, there's lots of things that, that you can, that you can get involved in. And I've been involved in a number of different organizations over the years. I, I was the board chair for the Chesapeake Bay Outward Bound School and our freshman class here at Gilman goes on an outward bound program every year, which I'm really proud that, that they're doing that and that outward bound is providing that for Gilman boys, cause I think that can be, that's one of those things that can be life-changing, can be impactful for a long time for kids. So that was an organization I spent a lot of time with. You know, I was on the WYPR board for a while, the public radio, right? And boy, talk about getting out of your comfort zone. What do I know about radio? Nothing, right? No, I mean, a little bit, but what an interesting organization that is.
Yeah.
Being a community resource, being a public, national public radio affiliate. They're now the number one radio talk show, news, radio talk show, you know, station in the market and, and, and the things that you can learn on NPR. Extraordinary, you know, different shows, different things. And so I thought that was a great community resource and I was really interested in, in, in trying to help them in any way I could and, and I really enjoyed that.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't know, I spent a lot of time doing United Way volunteering over the years, a great organization. When I was at T Row Price, pretty, pretty involved in industry affairs and I ran the trading desk there, the equity trading desk, where we would buy and sell securities for our clients and, you know, the, the equity markets are an amazing, complicated, creative, amorphous, you know, network of, of transactions. And I've always been fascinated by markets and sort of supply and demand and prices and, you know, why, why does a refrigerator cost that? You know, good, you know, look at a gas station on a corner where there are four gas stations. Generally, the price differential is very small.
Right.
See a guy across the street and he's the only other one, that price differential is gonna be greater. So how, how people compete in, in the economy, really fascinating to me. Supply and demand, urgency versus patience. It's just, you know, the dynamics of markets are fascinating and I, I, people say, you know, do you miss the markets? And I say, every darn day, you know. I mean, it's in your blood kinda thing and you really, you really, it's really fascinating, cause every day is a different day. I'm not sure I miss it so much these days, cause the market's been kinda lousy.
Yeah.
Economy's gone through some things, of course, but, but that, that keeps me, that keeps me occupied. And I, you know, I try and read the Baltimore Sun every day and I read the Wall Street Journal. And some listener might think the Wall Street Journal is just some conservative financial newspaper and it is that, but it's also incredibly well-done.
Right.
And, you know, there, there are articles and reporting on sports and politics and art and stuff, you know, vibrant. Really fascinating stuff. And so I, that's, to me, that's a good source of news. And I know, you know, you can get it online and a lot of different things you can do, but there's a, you know, there's, there's a benefit to actually reading the paper and turning the page for me.
I agree with that.
And, you know, I, I find that more stimulating than just scrolling.
Yeah.
Whether it's on my phone or my laptop.
Well, you get enough, you get enough of that, I think, during the day. It's a nice break too.
You probably do.
Yeah. For someone who's interested in a career in finance and you, you obviously have so much background and experience in this, what is that environment, what was it an environment like at a place like T Row Price? And what kind of person or, or characteristics in a person does that attract? Like fast-paced and?
Yeah. So, good question. So the, you know, the investment business is a broad business, right? And so there are lots of different skillsets and lots of different personalities that can be successful in that business, cause there are a lot of different jobs. So a trading desk is high-paid, it's, it's fast-paced, some pressure, you know. Multitasking is really important. Focus is really important. Precision is important. Effective communication is important. Integrity and ethics, you know, you get a reputation and if somebody is lying, cheating, stealing, you know, you're out. Okay? You can't work at a place like T Row Price. I mean, it just, you know, can't be, right? So, so you gotta be very careful about how you present things and how you do things. And that's true for all companies, I, I hope, right? But then there's also, you know, you could be a research analyst at an investment firm where you're doing a deep dive on a company and you're looking at, you know, the prospects for Amazon going forward. Can they continue their growth? Can I, can Apple continue to roll out new products? Is, is Uber, is Uber gonna be profitable? You know, whatever it might be. So there are a lot of different jobs in the investment side. I think the trading desk was a perfect environment for me. I'm a pretty high-energy guy and I can bounce around. I don't think I'm ADD, but you know, I can, I can, I can, I can move around pretty effectively most of the time and, and multitask. I loved the pace. I loved the challenge of trying to understand what was causing things to happen. Often there isn't an answer on that, but the, the quest for that to try and understand what, you know, what the supply-demand relationship looks like. I mean, you know, analytical skills and sort of like that were, were really, were really fun to employ. And, you know, I'm one of those kids that when I would be at the checkout counter, I'd try and add it up before the cash register did, you know. That's my, the extent of my math skills, but, but I was relatively quick in some things like that. I'm sure there's some downside to my character too, that maybe, maybe not as good as I hoped I would be in, in my job every day, but, but just a wonderful opportunity to, to be in that fast-paced environment. And, you know, you know, it's, it's a great thing when you can work for a world-class company and be really proud of what your effort is and what your, what your, your, you know, your goals are and what the product is you deliver. What the French would say, your raison d'etre, your reason for being, you know. What are you doing every day? Why, why is what you're doing making the world a better place? And, you know, arguably helping people with their retirement assets and saving money for their children and grandchildren and doing things they wanna do. That's a pretty worthy goal.
Yeah.
So I really, having interests aligned like that were important to me. You know, if, if you, if you don't have a good product to sell, it's tough to sell it.
Yeah.
You know, and, and, and also I will tell you, a recurring theme, but being surrounded by just the best and brightest, gosh, we had the talented people that I worked with and it was just, it was a marvel to watch. Sort of smart decisions being made. And in hindsight, they look so easy, you know, at the time. It's like, wow, how'd they come up with that? How'd this person decide to do that? Boy, wasn't that brilliant? So I had a, I had a, you know, I had a front row seat to, to a pretty engaging investment program and, and, and markets, right? And so if you think about, if anybody wants to look, but go back and sort of see chart the, chart the Dow or the S and P starting in 1980, July 14th, which is when I started in the business until, you know, 2020, you know, or 2019 in my case. You know, pretty interesting period, you know, but big bull markets with some, with some gut checks, but by and large, very favorable to investing. And of course, that makes it fun and, cause you, you know, you wanna be successful.
Right. Yeah, I think it's interesting. We've been talking a lot about history and a little bit about your career at T Row Price and I think for a student at Gilman or someone in, in college looking to get into that line of work, the fact that you studied liberal arts in, in college and, and wound up in a career in finance is interesting, because I'm passionate about liberal arts and English and history. And I think there is a way to be able to study something like, like history or English and, and still pursue different career opportunities.
Yeah. So it really speaks, Jake, to the, again, to the spectrum of opportunities of employment at, in a place in finance or, or business or, you know, banking or whatever it is. So, you know, I'm not the guy that's going to be able to identify the flaws in a balance sheet. That's somebody else. But I might be the guy that can help figure out how best to buy General Electric stock today, you know, or something like that. So there are different, you know, you have different roles and you know your strengths hopefully and you appreciate your weaknesses. And something I was taught to me a long time ago is, you know, you let people run on the things they do well and you support them in the things that they don't. And, you know, good employers, good schools, good, good entities, good communities, they, they try and figure out how to provide that. You know, let somebody really go crazy with the things they're good at and help them with the things that maybe they're, they're not. So, but, you know, there are parts of the business, of any business, that might fit my, my character strengths and yours, you know, and so you know, I can, I can talk to pretty much anybody and I can engage and I'm, I'm passionate and hope, I was thorough and respectful and careful and, you know, told the truth and, 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 you know, there's a trader's organization I belonged to for a long time. The motto was mayim dictum pactum, which is my word is my bond. So in a verbally transactional world, you know, you had to, if you say you're gonna buy something, you gotta buy it. Now, that's not necessarily the world that we're in today, cause the business has changed and so much of it is done electronically. And it's hard to, it's hard to say I didn't really mean to do that when you sent somebody an order to buy something. You can't say, well, I, that was kind of a mistake. Well, how did you do that? Cause it's electronic, you know, so doesn't mean you can't push the wrong side and, and send us buy when it should have been a sell, but anyway, it's, the business has evolved, but where, you know, if, if you have, if you have good interpersonal skills, you know, every business needs that, you know, it just, it just, you know, so, so the numbers people and the, and the, the engineering, if you will, the real science and the STEM stuff that applies now to pretty much any business, that's incredibly important, but it's not the entirety of the business, right? So there's still, you still need people with good communication skills. You know, people need to learn, you need, you need people with good right. You know, people need to learn, you need, you need people with good writing skills, effective writing skills, um, you know, negotiating skills. You know, negotiating is a lot of fun, you know, when you think about it. It, uh, some people describe a successful negotiation as people being mutually dissatisfied. You know, that's kind of an interesting principle. Everybody's kind of a little bummed out. Everybody's, didn't really get what they want. Maybe that's, that's a very good outcome. And that's not just in trading, but that could be in, you know, in, in buying a house or in, uh, negotiating a settlement somehow, or figuring out how to, how to, uh, you know, settle a, uh, a difference, you know, that you're having with somebody.
It's interesting you bring up, uh, writing because I'm trying to teach some, some grammar tips to my students and make sure that their writing is clear and strong this year. And, you know, I just feel like in COVID, they missed out on a lot of grammar and, and writing help. And I want to focus on that this year in my classes. And I have a friend who works in finance and he gave me a call in the middle of the day, the other day, and I was, you know, I was teaching a class and my phone's lighting up. And he, I didn't talk to him until later and he was like, I was writing an email to someone, you know, I'm trying to sell financial software. And I didn't know what, what the, how to phrase this sentence.
Right, right.
I was telling my classes, like no matter what you guys do in the future, you're probably not going to be an English teacher. You might, but you're probably going to work in sales or marketing or finance or law. And you still have to know how to write in all of those careers.
Yeah. So I think that, uh, I think that's a hundred percent right, uh, accurate. And I would hope, uh, I might suggest to Gilman boys today that, that they make sure that they pay attention in English and learn how to write and learn how to speak effectively and learn how to argue or present, you know, or, or influence. You know, there's this concept of, of controlling the T in squash. And I'm not a great squash player, but, but one of my Gilman graduate sons played. And the T is the center of the court, if you will, that sort of back in the back line where, you know, where you serve from. And the, and the person who controls that space really has the best opportunity to get to a ball anywhere on the court. And so if you control the T, you kind of control the flow. You kind of control the, the pace of the game. And if you apply that concept, uh, that analogy to life, you know, if you can speak effectively, if you can write, if you can persuade, if you can argue, if you can, uh, you know, extemporaneously present, you know, then you have presence. Then maybe the, maybe your goals, uh, get adopted. Maybe you get the benefit of, of having influenced things in a way that you think is best. And I sure hope that Gilman boys are going after that. Cause that, that, uh, you know, that doesn't, that doesn't go away. And as an older person, one of the things that you kind of, uh, are sad about is, you know, this device, as great as empowering as it is, you know, it's not face to face. And a text message comes with, with little body language. Now I'm a body language guy, right? You're going to pretty much know what I'm, how I'm feeling about things. I try and control that sometimes where you have to be down the middle, but, but it's important to be able to express yourself sincerely. And, uh, and, and that, that skillset, I don't care what's happening in the world, that's never going to completely disappear.
Agree with that a hundred percent. I love that. So Mr. Brooks, one more question. I think we, we are getting to the end here. Usually I ask my, we ask our guests on the podcast if they had ever had a book that they read over the course of their life. Maybe it was at Gilman, maybe it was in college, maybe it was recently, something that you've read that has impacted you in a certain way that, you know, is for the good and you'd recommend to our viewers and listeners.
Well, I, 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 uh, you know, I, as part of my Gilman experience, I, I really enjoyed reading Cast by Isabel Wilkerson. And she, she spoke to the school last, last year via Zoom, really interesting, uh, book. And, and, and an important book to, to read today, uh, when you think about the divisiveness in our society and how we're trying to think through being better to each other. So I, I would commend that to your reading as a, as I've heard others use that expression, commend to your reading. You know, um, uh, two, two books, I guess I remember reading it and seemed to me that, uh, well, so I'll go three and I'm not that, I'm not this great reader, I'm an okay reader. But The World is Flat by Tom Friedman is an unbelievable book. From Beirut to Jerusalem by Tom Friedman is an unbelievable book. There is a book written by a distant cousin of mine called Witness to History. A guy named Charles E. Bolan, who was a diplomat, he was an ambassador to France and Russia. And it's about his experience in the, going in the diplomatic corps in the thirties and World War Two. And he was in Russia with Stalin and he was in France with Charles de Gaulle. So that was impactful for a young guy thinking about history and life. And then there was a book that scared me to death, what my mother gave me. And I know that's why she gave it to me. It was called One L, which is about a guy's first year at Harvard Law School. And, uh, and just the challenges that he was facing. And I think I read that when I was a senior in college. And needless to say, I didn't apply to law school. But, but a pretty interesting, uh, uh, book. And I, yeah, you know, um, Mr. Woodward, uh, my old English teacher would want me to, to suggest to everybody, to recommend to everybody to read the Nick Adams stories from Ernest Hemingway, which are world-class.
Love it.
So that's a, that's a, that's a, uh, that's a broad brush for, I'm responding to an English teacher.
Yeah, I love it. That's great. Well, uh, Mr. Brooks, thank you very much for coming on the podcast today. I appreciate all your time. I appreciate everything you're, you're doing at Gilman and for Gilman. So thank you for coming in. Shazra, thank you for, for helping out.
Well, thank you both.
Conversation.
Been an honor to be here. Appreciate you inviting me and, uh, best of luck to you guys. And, uh, you know, see how it goes. Maybe I'll come back in a couple of years and we'll revisit. Okay?
Definitely. Thanks very much.
You bet.